Mike.
President.
Greg.
Here.
John.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
The motions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion for the concerned agenda?
For the second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
This is the time and place for discussion items on our agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. Come on tonight, come on.
Thanks very much. Thanks very much. Say I just wanted to drop by. My name's Jessica Whiskas and I'm going around and introducing myself to various city councils, but this is my hometown. You probably know my family, Whiskas, right? From around here, so I just wanted to drop these off if that's okay. I'm running for either state senate in our district and you probably all know why. It's because of this domain issue that's been affecting us. You know, it's an issue that touches all of us, no matter what part of your affiliation. We think about it. She's about to come good. So I decided to raise my hand. It wasn't something I ever thought I would do. And I just want to commend you for doing the service that you do. You know, I'm not in the rural area, so I'm never in the city council meetings, but I appreciate having gone to several of them now throughout Lynn and Benton County, my district. I appreciate all the work that you guys do. It's very important. And anyway, I just wanted to say if you guys have any questions or you ever want to reach me, you probably know where to find me, right?
So what would your district be?
So it's Senate District forty-two and it's rural Lynn County. So it makes a kind of a donut hole around Cedar Rapids and then it goes up into almost all of Benton County. Yeah. So that's been really great to get to know folks up there, you know. Any other questions or things I can?
Very serious question.
Yeah. Yeah. I never thought I would be involved in politics, but sometimes you just have to do something.
You were doing any well.
Yeah. Well, if you're doing it, so that's on to you. So maybe I'll just...
Thank you. Good luck.
Happy to be here.
Thank you so much. Please feel free to reach out. You guys probably all know where I live anyway.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion possible action in reference to fiscal year twenty-two and annual financial report. I see it's in the packet. I'll just give them a talk about it.
This is one of our annual reports that are due. It's due by December first. It's just a synopsis of everything of our expenses and our revenues for the year. It's also what's used based off of our other reports as well, so it's good to get this one done on the way. The auditors have reviewed it for me and give me their blessing, so all we have to do is prove it here as well.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion impossible action in reference to signage request at Bunning Field.
They also see in your packet, there's a picture of the scoreboard there at Bunning Field. I believe it's Todd Nelson, Bob Bunning and some parents that are going in together on this. This is at no cost to the city, but Oliver, can you explain it a little more?
Yeah, so Steve Miller, does everybody know Steve Miller? So he's been involved with Lisbon softball for what I've told since nineteen-nineties. With Bob doing things like mowing, meat eating, field prep, things like that, and being involved with the softball team, going to games and stuff like that. I was reached out to by Todd Nelson and some parents wanted to go in on something for him. I think it's a great idea. They're not changing the name from Lisbon City Park. They're just simply adding something for Steve for all the years of service. He hasn't only helped out the school, it's been a big help to the city as well. Everybody's seen that diamond and what it looks like over there and I just, I think it's a really good gesture for somebody who's put in that many years to help not only the school but the city. And just so everybody knows, Bob Bunning is a hundred percent on board with this. He was actually kind of the one, one of the ones that got it started, so. Pretty much what it is, is they're now changing the name of the field to suit both Steve and Bob.
Yeah, I think Steve, I talked to Steve a few years ago and I think he said that he was assisting Bob or taking care of the field since like one of Bob's first years of coaching. I mean, it goes way back.
Over thirty years, I don't know.
Yeah. So, yeah, Steve's, I guess Steve's been, as long as he's been old enough to help, he's been helping, so. Yeah, I can't think of anyone who deserves recognition more than Steve after Coach Bunning.
And we have to do the field.
We have best.
To top it all, I would so make motion.
The motion is a second. The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Prove twenty-eight E agreement with Lynn County Building Division to take over housing rental inspections.
You see in your packet, there is a twenty-eight E that has been working with Luke Maloney. He is on Zoom tonight. This did go before our attorney. Then I believe that they took it to their attorney for some of the recommendations that our attorney went with and in the end everyone's agreed there. So if you recall, Luke was here a couple of months ago. Right now, currently Lynn County Public Health does our rental inspections. If you recall, Luke is more, they created a position for this within the building division and they will be able to do enforcement a little bit better than the health department, actually a lot better than what the health department did. So I'll let Luke speak more if you would, please.
Anything else to say, Luke?
Yeah, good evening, Luke Maloney, Lynn County Building Division. Well, I guess our department is just a little more geared towards enforcement as well as fast research. I don't know that that's back on that, so. I guess that's just the board of super much asked us to take over this program for the county based on that fact that we're just a little more accustomed to that, so I guess that's my sales pitch. I'm really excited about our inspector Veronica, our co-principal's author. She's fully certified and properly maintaining some housing inspection and she's ready to go, so. We're excited to offer this. It took us years to get to the point, so we're just open any questions and we're happy to be able to provide the service.
So do you, do you do all the rental inspections for all of county?
We're starting with the incorporated cities under twenty-eight E contract and the reason for that is because we have a bigger impact to maintain that quality of housing base and, you know, improve the tax base with the small communities within Lynn County. When you get out to the rural areas, it's a little different conversation sometimes, so. That's kind of the focus of the program to begin, that maybe on board in the future. We're just starting slowly with our contract deals.
How many, how many cities have you, are you in right now?
Actually, none. We just, the inspector just came on board at the end of July. So we had to work with her for some training and things like that to get her ready for this. So we're on track, I think, with four jurisdictions right now and all eight cities we contact with have expressed interest in the program, so I think it's just a matter of time and we're just working through the process of fifty county councils in the world to discuss it, so we're ready to go.
Anybody got any questions for Luke?
No?
No.
Open the board.
Thank you.
The motion to approve twenty-eight E.
I approve. I make a motion to approve the twenty-eight E.
You got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thanks, Luke.
Thanks, Luke.
It's a public area for ordinance update to Chapter one sixty-one rental inspections for October tenth.
So this is kind of twofold with the twenty-eight E, since you approved that, law update, some of our ordinances. And I've also been working with Luke on that, basically just putting the, just because it's going to be somebody doing different, we're going to have to tailor it to how we're going to do it, so.
Move several.
So just not a whole lot of change, it's just more formality. But I did send it to the paper for October tenth, so we can get this going as quick as possible and have the three readings and hopefully get started by the end of fall here.
Okay. Motion to set public area for October tenth.
Have motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution twenty-four, twenty-two, approved by Rec Board member. Jayden?
Yes, so this is Ally Camerlin from Lisbon, obviously. She has two young kids that both are in quite a few of my rec programs as well as a husband who volunteers his time in my rec programs. We took a vote at our last parking rec meeting. We had four members and it was a four-zero vote to add her to our board, which would make us a six-person board now. We are technically, we're anywhere from five to seven is what was voted on at the last meeting when we discussed this, but we're looking for one more, but I think she's a great fit for our board and I'm just hoping that you guys will approve her tonight.
Make a motion, approve.
Have motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Greg.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike. John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-five, twenty-two, approving tip rebate transfers.
This is for Budget Lines, Mustang Investment Groups, fifty-seven thousand, three seventy-two, and this is their, I think they paid their property tax, so this is...
They did, and this is their entire year tip rebate.
It's the last one?
No.
Oh, no, this is budget lines. Yeah, 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 they're starting.
Christine, have any more for that, just? Anything else?
Motion for this?
Motion.
Motion, yes, second.
I'll second.
John.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Correspondents? Uh, nothing tonight. City engineer report.
Dave's up there. Very short, just working on the water main project and you can do this over several weeks.
That's it?
That's it.
Okey-dokey.
Hey, Dave, along with those lines, because I just have it written down here. We met with Eric last week, I believe. There's a plant still open to go for bid this fall or early winter and start the spring?
On the water main projects? Yes. Long as we don't have too many eastern needs, that should be the case. Just depending on once we get this line finished, if we have some things to do, we're working on that. Questions, yes, on private property?
Good. How you?
Have you got anything for David? Public work?
Pretty easy, too. We got that line in at the pond. We've been running a pump. The pump we have is a little bit oversized, so we're just trying to maintain the water level until we can find the pump we want to put in there for permanent, but everything seems to be working good with that. We started with our cemetery cleanup, which is not with the flowers around the stone. This is trying to level graves that have been there for extended period of time, started showing settling. So if people see fresh dirt on their graves, that's, that's all we're doing, is trying to dress them up with the dirt. And then we've been working on these locates. I've tried to notify everybody when we're in their yards for this water main project and we're trying to locate their water shut offs and everything for them, so. If anybody asks you guys, why did my yard get painted blue or green? That's, that's what it is. It's all for the surveyors.
Better?
Yep.
Ready for smell?
Yep.
Good.
No.
Redactive trouble?
How dare you say that?
They said coming in October. Mark and Greg.
Just the same old stuff. We have soccer, soccer and flag football going on. Everything has been going great so far. The only new thing really is we're going to do Halloween Town again this year on the thirty-first from five to seven. So at the next meeting, I'll have the road closure for you guys for twelve o'clock that day. It's a Monday and it'll be five to seven downtown, just kind of all the things that we do every year, games and local businesses and soup supper, things like that, so.
I don't know, maybe I do prefer.
I have a, yeah, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Hey, Trey, and I got a question. I'm just thinking for the sports complex. I know we've talked about fundraising. I know that you do a lot of little events throughout the, like movies at the park and things like that. Have we ever thought about putting like a free will donation box out there and just putting it out there that this is going towards the sports complex? I mean, not many people, I mean, they're not, if they don't want to donate, they don't have to, but it's just there in case people do. And it just gives us something, you know, obviously fundraising is kind of a big deal, especially something this big, so. I just thought throwing it out there and seeing what you thought. Even for Halloween Town, I mean, you could really do, you know, if they know that it's going to a big sports complex, you know, whether it's for the food that goes into the concessions or whatever, but just a thought.
I mean, I agree with you on Halloween Town, even, you know, if you set up like a poster of what the sports complex can look like.
Yeah.
You know, and just have a free will box there.
Yeah.
Good idea.
If there might be somebody that has a hundred thousand dollars that wants to do it.
Might be.
I mean, you never know. Yeah, I said there might be and he raised his hand. I'm pretty sure that was a...
You didn't see any fingers come up. Next finger, you will see.
Anybody else got anything to do for Grayden?
I will meet with my board second Monday or second Wednesday in October and I'll mention that to them and see if that's...
Yeah, see what they, just throw it out there.
So where would this collection can or whatever be?
I mean, you could put it, you know, either by library or someplace or...
It's really, really large.
Yeah, I mean, you could just have two of your life, or board members sent by it or whatever.
You and Will.
I'm not one of the board members. I gotta work that night anyway.
A lot of celebrations are doing that now, selling wristbands for a nominal amount of donation. And it's real popular back east. People expect, they ask for donation at their celebrations.
Is there been any discussion about, and I don't know, you don't have a building going in this first phase at all?
No.
At all. But when a building comes in or there's a walkway up to a building, has there been any discussion about selling laser engraved payers with...
Yeah, we've been talking about all bricks and designated trees for sponsors, things like that. Those are the things we're talking about. I just, we can definitely start fundraising, but I would like to be more familiar with exactly what we're expecting for cost before I go out and start asking a bunch of people for money, I guess, if that makes sense.
Sure. I've been in Manchester, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say over Manchester, when they put in their sports complex, lots of ball diamonds. The, the walkway up, there was all kinds of tiles and bricks and everything that, that recognized all the various companies and individuals that donated. It was, it was basically where you could sit and avoid, you know, the sun if you wanted to.
And another big one is, I mean, sponsoring out the diamonds when they're actually there and being used. So that's another huge, I mean, that's going to be something that we'll be able to use when we actually have our diamonds. We'll be able to have sponsorships for the diamonds, too.
There you go. All right.
We've got all kinds of different things in mind. It's just kind of a wait to see what exactly we need.
Everything I'm talking about is more infrastructure based. Yeah, I like Sarah's suggestion about this. Get it out there now, just in case there are people that have a disposable thousand dollars here or there. Like Mike.
He raised his hand when I said a hundred thousand.
I mean, that might be where, what you guys are talking about setting up for, like sour cream days for the significant. It might be better to have your fundraising for that, you know, than for the city account. Why don't you get with Brandon and why don't you guys get the paperwork started and not have to, to talk to your board and get that done. Anybody else got anything for Grayden? Police department.
I have nothing. He's on vacation this week, so.
Ambulance?
Nothing from him either.
All right, chief?
Nothing from him either.
Steven, sure?
Uh, just an update on the sports complex. Sidewalks, they're finishing up above Third Avenue tonight. They're up there. The parking lots have been done, chip sealed. As you recall, the special council meeting we had, reference Walnut Street, that is completed, looks really good. I would expect the grading will start and seeding here probably this week. And I think by the time they, they're doing some backfilling, but I would think by the end of this week or the end of next week, I would think they're probably wrapping it up up there.
We're going to block that up in the winter time, right?
I think so. That's kind of the plan. Especially on Walnut Street, we're going to put the concrete barricades up there. We'll leave a little room to pile snow for the guys, but I think we'll leave to get a gate or something across there. Especially in the first year, because we don't want people on that chip seal if we're going up it. Uh, that's about it, complex related, unless somebody's got any questions about that. Uh, Barnes, talked to Kurt Blakes, he's working in the lean-to. There's a lot of broken concrete where the posts are sitting. Basically, the concrete's not doing anything, so he's going to pull that out and re-sitting the concrete. So that's his project for this week and next week. And then we'll start to move to the interior of that middle barn. As I mentioned last time, I believe we got the community forestry grant with the help of Mary Ann's Ork and Robert's Ork, like fifteen hundred dollars for trees. So we submitted that, was able to get it. This is for Gray Show and Ash Tree, I believe it was. So on October fifteenth, they're going to be planting some trees out at the nature park and the Girl Scouts are going to be there and the DNR rep will be there to take pictures and be a part of that, so. It's Saturday, ten-thirty in the morning, so if anybody wants to help or be a part of that. I believe they're putting in six there. Okay. What's that? October fifteenth? Yep. And then the rest of the trees, uh, thirty-two. Another twenty-five will go around different locations in town. We're going to keep them off of the avenues where we're going to be doing the water main project, just so we don't have to move them or take them down.
Do we have any trees on those sports complexes?
There will be trees in the sports complex, but not these.
You got bags, you got bags for all these trees?
That actually is part of it, so they're all we bagged here. Um, as we talked, we've been doing some work with V and K on the water main project and that I think is about it for tonight.
Any questions for Brandon? Christina, do you have anything?
I do. I'm very pleased.
She's so excited.
Hello? Um, I'll be attending, I will leave the cities this week, so I will actually be at the office Wednesday afternoon through Friday afternoon. I'm currently working on the tip reports. I only have two of my nine yearly reports left to do, so I'll be working with Maggie with Spear for the tip reports. And then to celebrate some anniversaries here in September, Marcia celebrated two years here on September twenty-first. Chris Rodman is five years today and Amy White celebrated thirty-three years on September first. That's what I...
Thanks, Christina. Counselor report. Let's start, Sarah.
Um, I don't have anything, but just kind of echo myself every week, thanks to all the city and police for everything they do and so, that's all I have.
John?
Uh, nothing tonight.
Greg?
I just want to thank Anna Oldbats, Becky Gass, Mary and Jory for all the grant writing they do. I don't know, you know, they're grant specialists. And they wrote over seventy-two thousand dollars worth of grants for the city. So I think if you ever need a grant, bro, have a contact one that you know. Have them write for you, help them write it. That's all. And the other thing is I was contacted by the citizen. Are we going to give them guys a curb cut down here on the new street, Third Avenue? Do they have to ask for one or?
Well, it should happen, which we're talking about.
For the driveways?
Yeah. They already have it.
That's a curb cut?
Who are you talking about?
To get back to the garage?
Well, that's, that's a touchy, touchy situation because the, uh, they were off...
I, I understand it, but what is, how can, how can they? This is, okay, so when they built that back there, why wasn't something said?
You guys do as well. They don't have enough room technically to drive on their property to get to that garage if you want to go downstairs. We gave an extra footage. If you go out, you can see the extra, but that's, that's to the property line or real close. So they technically, they're using the city property as a driveway.
When, could they buy it or?
That's, that's up to you guys. The, tentatively what we're thinking is when the fence goes in, we're going to move the fence three feet in, go all the way up three feet. We would maintain it, but that would allow them understanding the situation. If that driveway is technically not a legal driveway, it's not good for them.
Well, I just, I just...
If they go to buy it or whatever they do, then yeah, we can cut whatever, you know, up to what the ordinance says, but I would strongly consider looking at Lynn County Assessor Site and see where the line is, because...
But all I'm saying is they, that somebody should have told them for their bill, if you know what I'm saying.
Would agree.
So now they're...
But it wasn't my bill, so.
No, no, I mean, it's been yours for...
It is what it is. Technically, that driveway, part of the code is supposed to be concrete, but it's not concrete. So there's all kinds of things that, yeah, I just...
Should you just tell me, tell me, you know, just...
We've tried to do everything we can to accommodate. We gave more drivers than they had, but I don't think it's right without coming to you guys to ask to put in a more, more curb cut. Now, it's something that can be done if they purchase it or you guys work something out. I mean, that's not my decision, but if you, if you go look at the property that's being used, I mean, there's, there's trees planted, there's fire pits out there and it goes for thirty, forty feet.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
So, um, I want to...
No, I'm not saying it's your fault. I'm just saying it's a, it's a pretty crappy deal, but that, that happened when they could have been prevented and somebody would have just said, no, we can't do it, period.
And I don't know the, I don't know what happened as to why and how.
Did Dave know it or was it the previous, was it previous to that?
No, they, they built it.
I mean, they're...
But it's Lynn County who approves.
Yep, the zoning.
Oh, zoning.
Zoning comes here, so.
But you don't need to have access. We don't need to make sure they have access. When we do zoning and we look at it, we make sure that structure can fit on that property.
Got it.
We don't care how they access that structure, because that's not us to tell them.
That's not yours to do, yeah.
So they'd have to get a separate driveway from that through us.
Gotcha.
To put the driveway.
Okay.
So.
I just didn't know.
Yeah, I've tried to work as much as I can with them. I think I should probably tell you that, I'm not doing what I can, but I know we talked about this in one of the meetings before, about the property line.
Yeah, because they came to one of the meetings for the car, the complex.
You get eight feet, you know, if we give them eight feet, that would be put, we could put the fence three feet in. We can still maintain it. I mean, there's really no reason to buy or whatever and they'd still have access, but I don't know. There's a lot of people in town that walk wide of driveways that would deny it, so. Then there's only so much footage per drop size in the ordinance that allows you so many feet, so. Like everybody else, I have to go into their driveway and then kind of, you know, I makes that shape out. But obviously with how their sits from the house, they weren't utilizing, they were, basically they were utilizing the whole driveway was actually in the city.
So, Mike?
No.
Nate?
I don't have anything tonight.
I don't have anything. New business, possible full session pursuant to Iowa Code, oh my God, twenty-one point five, here to discuss possible sale of real estate property. Sell real property, real estate property. So I need a motion to...
Motion to wind up those sessions.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will go into closed session and-